...Town of Cape Elizabeth Planning Board. Which is now called to order. We have a, an agenda of three items. Approve of minutes of the previous meeting of October 18th. Next, we have a, the Portland Water District is requesting a resource protection permit to install drainage structures for the Spurwink Pump Station located at 445 Spurwink Avenue. And third, is the Cottage Brook Boardwalk Resource Protection Permit. The Town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to construct 250 feet of four-foot wide boardwalk on an existing trail located on the Cottage Brook open space off Spurwink Avenue. And finally, there will be a chance for public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. The first item being the minutes of the previous meeting, which has been circulated to the Board. Will there be any comments or questions? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve.
So move.
Move second. Any discussion in the second motion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Technically abstained because I wasn't here at the meeting, so.
Right.
That's okay.
That's good. Five in favor, one abstention.
Yeah.
The next item of business, Portland Water District is requesting a resource protection permit to install groundwater underdrain for the pump station located at 445 Spurwink Ave. Application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. The procedure will be as follows. We'll have the applicant summarize the project. The Board will then make a finding of, have a chance to make a finding of completeness after giving the public a chance to speak to that issue. If it's deemed complete, the project will then be reviewed on its merits. There will be a public hearing on the merits as well. And at the close of the discussion, the Board has the option to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or table the application. Would the Portland Water District like to present the, what it's up to?
Thank you very much for, for your review of the application. I'm Paul Rodriguez. I'm a senior project engineer with the district. With me today is Norm Towdel as well. Norm was instrumental in helping pull some of the details of the application together. So we'll, we'll do a quick review. And I will try to speak loudly into the microphone while I, while I point. But the, the reason why we're here has to do with groundwater getting into a vault that is located here near the southern end of the station. And that vault is below some electrical gear. So over the years, we've done as exterior coatings, interior coatings of the conduit, everything we can do to try to keep groundwater from, from getting into that vault. Obviously, as groundwater sits in that vault, it creates a, a human environment and that's, that's not ideal, obviously, for the long-term life of the electrical gear. So we, we come to you with this proposed project as a way to alleviate groundwater from sitting here against the side of the building. And, and that area, as we all know, is, is low. Typically, that's where pump stations are ideally suited locationally for a relatively low area. So it's always, it's always wet there. So the proposed project includes groundwater relief drain that will run along the backside of the, of the structure to alleviate some of that groundwater against the building. And then daylight just to the west of the structure. And the invert elevation of that would allow for that relief drain to be above highest high tide. But to speak to the, the question that I know has been, has been raised and is, is of importance for all of us going forward is, we understand that, that this area, being one of the lower areas in town, when we look at long-term seawater elevation change and storms, those are not really impacting the, the main goal of this project, which is 99% of the time to alleviate the, the groundwater that's, that's basically collecting on this backside of the structure. So storm surge happens, this whole area is wet, you know, obviously, it's not hurting or helping us. So certainly, another discussion for another day, probably 20 or 30 years from now is, okay, what do we do then? But this being, the pump station itself being a 20, 30-year asset, you know, certainly be appropriate to, to think about those things at that time. But for, for now, that, that's the main goal. Those are the primary objectives. Did I forget anything? Norm?
Yeah, please.
Thanks.
Just the fact that the outlet of the drain is outside of the area that the district currently leases from the town. And we have already been to the town council, I think earlier this spring, and the council did approve a lease amendment agreement to allow that drain to be built all the way to the area where we're, little drain into the river.
Thank you.
And that'll be completed pending a positive vote tonight, so.
Could you identify yourself?
My name's Norman Towdel. I'm with the Portland Water District as well. I'm the district's right-of-way agent administrative assistant.
Any other questions? I just want to make sure I understand what I'm looking at here. This note, 93 linear feet of four-inch groundwater relief drain. The, the line that it's pointing to is a pipe that is 20 to 34 inches down in the ground? And it runs, the invert is at the ground level?
The invert of the pipe, okay, so.
6.75.
At, right. At, at the, at the start of the, of the drain, the invert is, is fairly shallow. It is only buried by, as you say, about 20, but it's about 20 to 30 inches down from grade.
The whole pipe is underground, so the water flows over the ground and just drops into the trench and is carried in the pipe out to the riprap.
Correct. So the, the whole, the, the, the whole pipe is underground and will be restored, you know, the, the surface will be restored, grass, loamed and seeded.
Okay. And the vault access, is that's to the vault under the pump station?
Correct. Yeah, that is somewhat unrelated to this, but, but shown for, you know, relative purposes for the, for the contractor. It is a vault to access the pumps that are outside of this. This structure really houses just the generator and the electrical gear.
Oh, okay.
So the pumps are actually below grade in, in a vault in that general location.
Any other questions by members of the Board for the Water District? Just one more question, and this is, I guess, in the same vein as Joe's previous question. You'll have a underground pipe buried in crush rock or gravel, I take it. Is the surface restoration, is that done in the configuration of the swale to keep the water of that area kind of centered over the pipe so it will go down in, or is it flat grated?
The, the intent was for it to be flat grated, so to restore it to its current, its current configuration. So we won't be really changing, or at least the current plan doesn't change the way that, that stormwater, you know, runoff occurs on the site.
This is my own lack of knowledge speaking, but why would you not create something of a swale just to focus the water into that area which you want to infiltrate the pipe and go on rather than having it dispersed?
Sure. Our, our, our real focus is, is on, is on the groundwater and the groundwater really close to the structure. So our hope was to alleviate that, you know, small pockets, very clay there. So obviously, our, our focus is, is really on, on that side of the building, has to be kind of narrow focus. So the, the surface grade really, you know, from, from our point of view is, as it's currently configured, is, is fine. I mean, surf, water on the surface can continue to go where it's going now. It's, it's really, you know, we're not intending to take surface water and, and direct it in that location. We're looking to kind of keep everything on the surface as it is and get the, the groundwater away from the structure.
So groundwater is the water coming up?
Right. So the, the groundwater, that's basically in that, that clay saturated soil around the subsurface.
Is this what's commonly referred to as a French drain, or not?
Yeah. I, I think that is, that is a, a, a good term for it. I hesitate because it's not, maybe not a perfect analogy with, but.
Roughly speaking.
Yeah.
Elaine, Carolene?
I just want to get to the topic of completeness, which is the first item on that we're to, and there are a couple of waivers mentioned here, and I just, we know you asked for the waivers from the. But I think in the interest of the public knowing, could you please explain the waivers and why you think we should grant them?
Certainly. Should we, anyone in particular, or?
There are two waivers indicated here that were requested. And I just, I just think it needs to be stated for the record why you're asking.
What, the one-foot contours and the mapping of vegetative cover, I believe, are the two?
The waivers mentioned here are information on wetland plants and wetland soils and stormwater management plan.
Certainly.
Are there more?
Yeah, well, you had a two-foot contour, but I, looking at your plan, it looks like it's already drawn in one-foot contours. I didn't quite understand that one.
Right. So speaking to the, to the, the one-foot contour waiver, our feeling was that as, as the extent of this work is, is fairly minimal and, and really doesn't create any, any new impervious areas or impact surface flow on the site, that seemed appropriate to us. The stormwater runoff plan waiver is, is really our justification for, for requesting that is very similar in that the extent of the work is very small and doesn't create any, any new impervious area or impact the way that stormwater is, is managed on this Those were the two ones.
Carolene, did that answer your?
Well, the other one mentioned here is wetland plants and wetland soils.
Yeah, mapping the vegetative cover in soils?
Sorry?
Was your, on mapping the vegetative cover in soils?
Right.
Yep.
Providing information about wetlands. And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed to any of this.
Yes, no, I just.
Trying to get it out for public information, that's all.
Right, understood. With respect to the, with respect to the wetlands mapping, our feeling there was, as, as this is a, you know, previously disturbed site where the structure was constructed, we're, we're not, yeah, not, not impacting or altering, impacting wetlands with this project. So that, that's the, the main reason for, for the request of that waiver. Norm, did I miss anything on that? Thank you for your, your help.
Just the fact that there is a little bit of wetland impact at the outlet structure where we do have some stone riprap to prevent erosion, but that would be the only thing that would be located in an area that's not already improved with grass and.
No other comments? I'll offer the public an opportunity?
Peter, I just wanted to point out that in the town engineer's letter that we have for civil technicals, they talk about the reasons for the requested waivers and support those waivers.
Yes, engineer has, has provided the support. Offer the public a chance to be heard on the subject of completeness, completeness? Any members of the public wish to be heard? There being none, we'll close the public comment. Do Board members have any other questions on the subject of completeness? Being none, ask for a motion. Jonathan?
Motion for completeness be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Portland Water District for a resource protection permit to install a groundwater underdrain for the pump station located at 445 Spurwink Ave. be deemed complete. Waivers, number one, waivers for providing information on wetland plants and wetland soils, waiver for providing a stormwater management plan prepared by a professional engineer.
Second.
We have a second motion. It's ready for discussion. Elaine?
Do we need to add to that, the waiver regarding the mapping?
The one-foot contours?
The one-foot, the one-foot.
They have one-foot.
Yeah, the map has one-foot contours. I think the letter was in error asking for that.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. A call for a vote on the second motion. All in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will turn next to the merits of the application. Would the Water District care to make any further comments on the, on the application? Any reasons that would go beyond the issue of completeness that you'd like to bring to our attention?
No, none at this time.
Okay. Do Board members have any comments or questions? Carolene?
No, let Alain go first. That's kind of foolish.
Okay. I'm looking at the criteria that were asked to identify in our specific findings here. And I'm looking specifically at item number 11 on page four of our memo. Talks about conformity with a particular environmental quality handbook, erosion and sediment control, published by the Maine Soil and Water Conservation Commission dated March 1986, as revised. But I don't see in the supporting materials anything that specifically addresses those standards. So I guess my question would be to Maureen, nor does the engineer specifically call out those standards. So I'm just, want clarification as to what our basis is for making conclusions on that.
Well, we're trying to cobble this together, and that is a standard in our ordinance. And I am confident that the installation of the riprap and the restoration of the site after the installation of the pipe, this as proposed by the applicant, is consistent with this environmental quality handbook.
I'm wondering if in the future, that's something we could ask the engineer to look at, because I don't even think we have a copy of it. Maybe you do, Victoria.
The only thing I can kind of add to that, Elaine, is if you do look at the plan they submitted, item number three does refer to the main, I don't have my glasses, ENCH Handbook will be used. Would that be the same handbook that they're talking?
I don't know. That was one of my questions. I don't know that that is the same handbook.
Okay. I was just wondering if maybe that note.
Erosion sediment control?
Also might address this one. I'm just wondering.
I saw that it referred to a handbook, but I didn't know if it was the same one.
And the handbook has changed its name, but our standard says, or subsequent revisions thereof. So it feels like we're still in the range of what would be acceptable.
Okay.
I take it this is a standard of good practice for this type of construction?
Yes. It's been around for a long time.
They can be held to and, by Ben when he goes with.
Absolutely. Ben actually has to get training for this, and we are under a stormwater permit. And when constructing contractors are out there, I think some of you saw an email I forwarded to you recently, they actually have to fill out a separate form just, just about stormwater and erosion control, so.
Okay. And the other question I had, kind of similar on floodplain management, we have in our materials that there is a floodplain permit required here, and the finding is that the, the underdrain complies with this particular section of the floodplain management ordinance. And I guess my question is, is that, is getting the permit from the town what's required in order to meet that requirement?
That's a good question. We're working with the standards that we have in the zoning ordinance, and the wetland permit standards have not been changed since 1990. So the floodplain requirements have been updated at least twice that I can think of. What I can tell you is that I did ask the code officer who's responsible for administrating our floodplain ordinance, he, he concurred that this needed a permit. And I think by putting a condition on the approval that it, it get the floodplain permit, that you can make the finding that it's going to comply with the floodplain regulations.
So maybe we want to add that to the conditions?
Sure.
Do you have text to add on that, Elaine?
She's writing.
Oh, okay.
Looking up what it's the kind of permit we said, floodplain permit from the code enforcement officer. Okay. I'd just say that the floodplain permit be obtained from the code enforcement officer. Those are my only comments.
Just, yeah, that should have been condition three. In my mind, it was condition three.
So would you tell me the condition of that? It just, that it, that a floodplain permit be obtained from the code enforcement officer.
Thank you. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Carolene, you had a?
I have a kind of an odd little thing. This is located on Spurwink Ave. in Cape Elizabeth, not Spurwink Road in Scarborough. So your, your plan does not identify, at least the copy we have, doesn't have the right road name next to your, oops, on your, for your site. So.
We will fix that.
Causes confusion.
Good catch. Where is it?
Hmm?
On the plan?
Right there. Spurwink Road.
Spurwink Road, yeah. Is that?
Spurwink Ave. is the proper name of the road.
Oh. I've seen you guys in town a lot, kind of.
I'm always sending trucks around, and I got to make sure and send them to the right place.
You folks will.
Certainly, yes.
Take care of that. Thank you, Carolene. Any other comments or questions or observations by the Board before we consider the application on its merits?
You need it.
Right. Okay. We will next offer the public a chance to be heard on the merits of the application. Any members of the public like to be heard? There being none, we'll close the public part of the session. And if there are no further comments, I'll ask for a motion. Elaine, would you like to do it, since you've got the new text?
I'd rather not read it.
Oh, okay. Would somebody else like to read it?
Hang on.
Joe?
Sure. Motion for approval. Finding of fact, one, the Portland Water District is requesting a resource protection permit to install a groundwater underdrain at the pump station located at 445 Spurwink Ave., which requires a resource protection permit. Two, the proposed underdrain will not materially obstruct the flow of surface or subsurface waters across or from the alteration area. Three, the proposed underdrain will not impound surface waters or reduce the absorptive capacity of the alteration area so as to cause or increase the flooding of adjacent properties. Four, the proposed underdrain will not increase the flow of surface waters across or the discharge of surface waters from the alteration area so as to threaten injury to the alteration area or to upstream and/or downstream lands by flooding, draining, erosion, sedimentation, or otherwise. Five, the proposed underdrain will not result in significant damage to spawning grounds or habitat for aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife. Six, the proposed underdrain will not pose problems related to the support of structures. Seven, the proposed underdrain will not be detrimental to aquifer recharge or the quantity or quality of groundwater. Eight, the proposed underdrain will not disturb coastal dunes or contiguous back-dune areas. Nine, the proposed underdrain will maintain or improve ecological and aesthetic values. Ten, the underdrain will maintain an adequate buffer area between the wetland and adjacent uses. Eleven, the underdrain will be accomplished in conformance with the erosion prevention, provisions of Environmental Quality Handbook, Erosion and Sediment Control, published by the Maine Soil and Water Conservation Commission dated March 1986, or subsequent revisions thereof. Twelve, the underdrain will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from buildings or from other construction into wastewater treatment facilities in violation of Section 15-1-4 of the SUE ordinance. And thirteen, the proposed underdrain will not, in the case of resource.
Will.
Will. Oh, the proposed underdrain will, in the case of resource protection permits in the Resource Protection Floodplain District, also comply with Section 666 of the Floodplain Management Ordinance. Fourteen, the application substantially complies with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Portland Water District for a resource protection permit to install a groundwater underdrain for the pump station located at 445 Spurwink Ave. be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, that the plans be revised to address the comments in the town engineer's letter dated November 7th, 2016, paragraph 6, 7, and 8. Two, that the site be inspected after construction to confirm the area has been restored to the original grade and revegetated. And then three, can I just read it at this point, or do?
Yes. Do you have it?
I don't have it.
Oh, here we go.
I'll take it. I got it. Three, that a floodplain, oh, God.
That a floodplain permit be obtained.
Be obtained, okay. Three, that a floodplain permit be obtained from the Cape Elizabeth.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement officer.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Being none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? It carries unanimously. Thank you. Jonathan, thank you. The next item on the agenda, excuse me, is a Cottage Brook Boardwalk Resource Protection Permit. The town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to construct up to 250 linear feet of four-inch-wide boardwalk on an existing trail located on the Cottage Brook open space. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. The procedure will follow, will be as follows. That's right? I'm sorry, four-foot wide. The, we'll first have the applicant summarize the project. The board will then address the issue of completeness, and the public will have a chance to be heard in that matter. If the board finds, does find that the submission is complete, it may then continue to review the merits of the application. There will be a public hearing on that issue as well. And at the close of the discussion, the board has the option to approve, approve the conditions, deny, or table the application. So first off, we'll have the applicant summarize the project. If you'd identify yourself, sir, and tell us what's going on.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Jeremy Gabrielson. I'm representing the town's application on behalf of the Conservation Committee. And we're seeking an application, the town is seeking an application to install 250 feet of boardwalk on an existing trail. The trail is within an area that is set aside as an easement and has a trail right-of-way in it. There is an existing trail that is on the site in this location. It's a trail that was not formally designed, and there's some braiding and running around through the mud. And so the purpose of this application is to both provide a better user experience, and also, our hope is that by putting a four-foot-wide trail in, we'll be able to eliminate some of that braiding that's occurring, and the natural wetland vegetation will be able to grow up on either side of the boardwalk. This trail alignment is one that will help get trail users out onto Spurwink Avenue up in the, near the South Portland end of town, and it's, oh, I just lost my train of thought. It's, the alignment basically is, there's not an upland location on this site for the trail to be aligned, so the location that we have landed on, where the existing trail is, is really the shortest segment of wetlands that we could cross to get from one side of the property to the other, and the entire trail is within an RP2 wetland.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments? If you could address specifically the two waivers you're seeking, the one-foot contours and the runoff...
Stormwater runoff?
Stormwater...
Yeah, so the one-foot contours, so I'd refer you to the report submitted by the town engineer. The one-foot contour waiver, it was felt was not needed because the boardwalk that we're seeking to put in here is actually an elevated feature, so it will sit above the level, and it shouldn't affect the ground gradation or runoff at all. And in terms of the stormwater runoff, the justification is the same, it's less than 1,000 feet of boardwalk, and it should not materially alter runoff in this area.
The town engineer has approved both. Comments or questions by member? Okay, offer the, I'm sorry, Caroline?
Just a quick comment. I appreciate the package that was put together, it was very nicely done.
Thank you, I can take no credit for that at all.
Indeed, it's very nice. Any members of the public would like to be heard on the issue of completeness of this application? There being none, we'll close the public comment period. If there are any further comments or questions by board members, I'll ask for a motion, please? Jonathan?
Sure. Motion for completeness be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the town of Cape Elizabeth for a resource protection permit be to construct up to 250 feet, 250 linear feet of four-foot-wide boardwalk on an existing trail located on the Cottage Brook open space be deemed complete, and the following waivers are granted. One, a waiver for providing one-foot topographic contours, and two, a waiver for providing a stormwater management plan prepared by a professional engineer.
Second.
We have a seconded motion, is there any further discussion on that motion? Being none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? It carries unanimously. Since completeness has been found, we'll proceed to consider the application on its merits. Does the applicant have any further points you'd like to make on the application?
Not at this time.
Jonathan?
Just so we're clear, with regards to where you're putting this, or where you're requesting to put the boardwalk, that's sort of between an RP1, which is an actual, like, usually it's standing water, correct, and then private land, so that's sort of the only option that you have?
That is correct, yes.
And where else in town are similar boardwalks used? What other trails? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
But have you used these before?
Oh, yes, Winnick Woods is a similar example of this, yeah.
And they have, you've had good results with these types of boardwalks?
Yeah, they hold up pretty well. They're, they really do a good job of channeling users to where we'd like them to go, rather than trying to avoid the mud and braiding out farther into the wetlands.
And one thing that was discussed during the workshop was that this part of the trail is usually very wet anyway, and it's because it's so wet that it's sort of been expanding out, so people are kind of making their own trail there, and the belief from the Conservation Committee in the town is that a boardwalk will actually be, it'll be better for the trail and the natural environment itself, because it'll keep people sort of on dead center, correct?
Correct, yeah. I would expect that if, you know, based on past experience, you put the boardwalk in, 99% of users are going to be on the boardwalk, and the wetland areas that are currently becoming muddy around it are going to narrow in, and that vegetation will grow back.
Elaine?
The materials talked about this path being for hikers and bikers. Is there a ramp that goes up to this boardwalk to make it accessible for people on bikes so they don't just go around it?
Yeah, it'll be designed so that there's, it'll grade in, similar to what we have in Winnick Woods, you know, you can, you'll be able to ride your bike onto it, it won't be a lift.
So there's sort of a ramp, because I'm looking on the drawing that we have, and it doesn't show anything like that.
Yeah, the intention is for it to have enough, a shallow enough gradation at both ends that a bike can get onto it.
Great, thank you.
Victoria?
Just a general question about timeframe. When does the town propose to maybe put this in?
That's a good question. The, so the boardwalk would also be subject to other permitting, and I don't know what the specific timeframe is. I don't believe it will go in before snow flies, but I don't, I don't know for sure. Yeah.
And I'd imagine that the, just like the other boardwalks that the Conservation Committee's doing, this is going to be all volunteer work?
Correct.
That the town's not going to be spending a lot of money on the labor of putting these in?
Correct. Our goal is to keep the cost of installation as low as we can.
Caroline? At this point, we'll offer the public a chance to be heard on this application. Any members of the public like to be heard? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further comments or questions by the board? If not, I'd like to call for a motion.
I could do a motion. Can I do both, procedurally allowed, the completeness and approval? I don't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right. Motion for approval. Findings of facts. The town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting a resource protection permit to construct up to 250 linear feet of four-foot-wide boardwalk for an existing trail located on the Cottage Brook open space, which requires a resource protection permit. Two, the proposed boardwalk will not materially obstruct the flow of surface or subsurface waters across or from the alteration area. Number three, the proposed boardwalk will not impound surface waters or reduce the absorption capacity of the alteration area so as to cause or increase the flooding of adjacent properties. Four, the proposed boardwalk will not increase the flow of surface waters across or the discharge of surface waters from the alteration area so as to threaten injury to the alteration area or to upstream and/or downstream lands by flooding, draining, erosion, sedimentation, or otherwise. Five, the proposed boardwalk will not result in significant damage to the spawning grounds or habitat of aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife. Six, the proposed boardwalk will not pose problems related to support or structures, Number seven, the proposed boardwalk will not be detrimental to aquifer recharge or the quality or quantity of groundwater. Number eight, the proposed boardwalk will not disturb coastal dunes or, wow, contiguous back dune areas. Number nine, the proposed boardwalk will not maintain or, will maintain or improve ecological and aesthetic values. Number 10, the boardwalk will maintain an adequate buffer area between the wetland and adjacent land uses. Number 11, the boardwalk will be accomplished in conformance with the Erosion Prevention provisions of Environmental Quality Handbook, Erosion and Sediment Control, published by the Maine Soil and Water Conservation Commission dated March 1986, or subsequent revisions thereof. Number 12, the boardwalk will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from buildings of, or from other construction into wastewater treatment facilities in violation of Section 1514 of the Sewage Ordinance. And, or 13, the proposed boardwalk is not located in a floodplain. 14, the application substantially complies with Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the town of Cape Elizabeth for a resource protection permit to construct up to 250 linear feet of four-foot-wide boardwalk on an existing trail located on the Cottage Brook open space be approved, subject to the following conditions, that prior to construction of the boardwalk, the town obtain any necessary permits from the Department of Environmental Protection and the Army Corps of Engineers.
Thank you, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Joe, thank you. We have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last agenda item is a opportunity for public comment on anything not on the agenda. Any members of the public like to be heard? There being none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, we adjourn.
Second. Favor? Carries unanimously, we're done.